Call the council meeting to order, please be seated. They wouldn't salute eh? A motion to adopt the minutes of the open council meeting. Oh, sorry, a motion to reconvene the open meeting. All those in favor opposed, carry now, a motion to adopt the minutes of the open council meeting held on February 6, 2017. Been moved and seconded, all those in favor, opposed and carry. Seconder please. Been moved and seconded, all those in favor, opposed and carry. The delegation is John and Elma Rowey, and it's in regard to unsolicited mail from the city. Welcome, please come forward.
Thank you, Mayor and council.
Did I pronounce your last name right?
Close enough.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Apparently immigration passports have just removed their cute accents, so it's less.
They did a lot of that stuff.
Rowey, yes. The year is a special year, it's 2017 Bernaby celebrations, so municipality is actually 125 years celebration, Canada 150. The part of business here is, Canada was six months in a situation where we didn't know where we were. But in regards to the meeting today is planning and now engineering to us, this is unsolicited mail and creating, I'll try and explain it here. Planning cards, since 1991, our house was built in a municipality of Bernaby, and the plans approved the dwelling and inspected by the municipality of Bernaby in 1991. The new house sat empty for two years and now in the city of Bernaby. At the same time, across from us, five houses became zoned condo, and lane and alley and chaffy was shortened. So we had changes in our neighborhood as well. The engineering, the letter we all got recently, meaning our people, a collection of, once a week, we had our own bins and condos, got green bins when they were both built equally. But now the changes that have happened with Canada, we are all equals until we vote on promises. Some 1,800 promises later, Justin Trudeau, on electoral change, he lied now, one year later, and he says that we have to adapt to that new procedure of promises made or not held. Our house was built as a mega house, plans approved by the municipality in 91, and now the census people, the long form, they are federal person, and we filled in the long form, but it was not a comparable population in our house in dwelling. We had eight guests at the time, eight years ago, and now we have three. And so they hounded us three times with three sets of forms, and then they went and approached the neighbor to ask how many people are in our dwelling, which is totally illegal as far as the census form is concerned. So my concerns are the approach of everything done. The, they sent us three times a set of forms, and then this person came over, and now we have, with planning coming along, sending us twice cards in regards to our dwelling, based on an assessor who does not reside here, he's a provincial one. And so then, whatever his passing on, that's developed between everyone else. But the consequences of it is, ours is a municipality-approved house, and so it didn't get picked up on a forklift and moved into the city, it was there, the city changed name, that's all. And so the, we've been the resident of the house for 26 years, and the, so now that I'm retired, I anticipate a relaxed situation, and it isn't happening. So now the last one is a garbage collection. It's written to me as if the garbage man now has my name, personal name and address, and that's not proper. So the same with the planning, by sending out a card, will you please incriminate what you are doing or not doing? Whereas the assessors has only two points of agenda. One is to assess the land comparable to other lands, and to assess the dwelling comparable to other dwellings. As to which room is used for which baby and which child, or any child, is not the assessor's discretion. And so that's why all rooms in the house are mine. My wife had knee operation, others have, she had to reside in the dining room, which became a bedroom, so I could live in the bedroom, which is a living room. And so the assessor has nothing to do with that. And so that's what I'm getting at, is there are certain things that don't really make me comfortable, being a resident for 40 years, and this is our third house, and I'm retired. I've had a heart attack, I've had a tumor removed, so I don't need stress, so I don't really want to be here. But I just had to come here, and this is a ruse actually, because I have a final summation here. I didn't read my letter now, but anyways, the summation I got here is, Bernaby is celebrating this 2017. The municipality of Bernaby was 100 years old from 1882 to 92. In 92, we were on Kingsway, listening for a pipe band coming to celebrate. Bernaby now became a city, 100 years old, and it first day of a city. And so then, the celebration actually is what we, from the webpage you have put up, we're celebrating 125 years of Bernaby and 150 years of Canada, but it's not really factual, in that we as a province are not that old. The Fredericton meeting in 1867 was for the six provinces then. So Bernaby and B.C. were not even considered, we were part of Cascadia, that would be. But what happened is the gold rush bankrupt B.C. by having a Caribou Highway up there, 101.3 million dollars spent just to go and find gold. And the consequences of that, our bankruptcy was 1.3 million, which is probably 15 billion or more, or whatever, who knows what it would be, but it was all measured in gold anyway. The thing is, the province did not join Canada actually until 1871. And so, I mean, I think it's 1870, yeah, 1871. So that being the case, we are not really part of Canada 150 years, as a province, and as, like I said, the city here now too, we were municipality the first 100 years, and only the last 25 years, we're now celebrating a quarter century of the city of Bernaby. And that's again, my personal opinion, I'd like to expand on that a little further, but like I say, all this is actually a ruse on my part of, if I find one last page here. So there is one other date that nobody has mentioned or said anything about, but our son was born 30 years ago, which happened to be also the moment that two aldermen joined the Bernaby municipality as aldermen, and those two were Gary Beijing and Derek Corrigan in 1987. And so the following years, five years later, we became a city, and we had Mayor Laworn, and then that changed to overtime in 1987. I mean, 1992, I think at some point I asked councillor Colleen Jordan there, I couldn't get the factual dates, but as far as I know, Mr. Mayor, you have been with us now for full 30 years sometime this year, and so I just wanted to present you with a token gift to honor our element of being part of your council. So thank you very much, here's a token item.
Of course, Mr. Rowey.
Well, there's a short few to it, but I'm familiar with this.
Oh, a gavel.
And you probably got 500 of them somewhere, but this is actually made from Sumac in Ontario.
Isn't that beautiful? Thank you, Mr. Rowey, I very much appreciate that.
Just wanted to, maybe, who knows.
Thank you, Mr. Rowey, I appreciate that. You know, I will, I will use this because they were just telling me that I had to take this one out of circulation, they were going to put it in the museum, because it is a work of art. It was presented to the city in 1992, when we first became a city, as you point out, this was a gift, and since it's getting pretty worn, and it was made by a First Nations artist, they're saying that it's time for this to go in the archives. And so this is a perfect time for a new gavel, thank you very much, very thoughtful of you.
It's actually Sumac from a friend of ours, he was the clerk at the courthouse in Toronto, in Hamilton there, and so he made that for me as a, I used to be a president of a union, and so I felt it was better in your hands.
Thank you, sir, I appreciate it, thank you very much. Well, there we go, a positive start to the meeting, and I've saved the clerk a whole bunch of money. A motion to resolve into a committee of the whole to consider reports. Moved and seconded, all those in favor, opposed and carried. The first item is council appointments and reappointments for 2017. Been moved and seconded. Now, I wanted to just comment to council that there have been some changes that have happened as a result of this report. We have looked at ways of being more efficient, streamlining some of our committee system, looking at ways we can ensure that our committees are reflecting the duties that we have. The traffic safety committee has been merged with the public safety committee, which brings together people on safety issues, both for traffic and fire, police and emergency planning. We have taken the executive committee and merged it with the financial management committee. Funding and development committee has picked up the role of transportation. And the biggest thing that's happened has been the new sustainable city advisory committee. We have completed the triumvirate of plans, the plan for economic development, the plan for social sustainability, and the plan for environmental sustainability. Now the job is to bring those plans together to ensure that Bernaby remains a sustainable city. The new committee will incorporate the work that's previously been done by the social issues committee and by the environment committee, and add additional people who are working on economic development issues, to ensure that we're not working in silos, that we're bringing those three plans together, and that citizens are helping our councillors to evaluate the progress that we're making in regard to those plans. We made a commitment to the public, that we were going to implement those plans over the course of the years, and we want to be able to monitor and ensure that those plans are taking place. So this is a significant difference that's been made in our system. Lastly, we were concerned that the advisory planning commission had not had sufficient amounts of work to be able to justify the committee continuing, as a result is that we decided to dissolve the advisory planning commission. We'll continue to look for other spots for people who have worked on that committee to become involved. Really, that was municipal government 101, an opportunity for people to have a look at some of the things we do in our planning, but at this point, we think that probably that work can be better utilized in regard to other committees. So, the whole package is one in which we think we've become more efficient, and we've addressed some of the issues we have. The other committees that are still in operation and continue to go on are Parks Commission, the Library Committee, the Heritage Commission, so there are many committees that are still working for the city, and some of them are simply a melding of existing committees to ensure that we don't have too many meetings. And over the next while, we'll see how that works out. Councillor Dallywell.
My apologies, Your Worship, I did not mean to interrupt.
Oh, that's all right. Anyway, with that, I will ask for the question to be called. All those in favor, opposed and carried. Item 4B, City of Bernaby Archives Annual Report, Community Heritage Commission, councillor Jordan.
Thank you very much, Your Worship, this is the annual report from our archives that came through the Heritage Commission at our last meeting, and it highlights the very successful work of our staff and the citizens involved with the support of the community and in our archives. As you know, we're experiencing a shortage of space, because the problem is, when you build it, they come and they bring boxes, boxes and boxes of things, and so, but our staff has been able to manage over this last year to do a lot more digitization, and they've been able to forestall the inevitable space problems for another year or two, but the report in front of us tonight highlights some of the accomplishments beyond the regular work of the archives over this past year. And I think it's now important to highlight for the public as well as council, that all open records from 1970s to today are now digitized and directly accessible online as documents. So all the open records of all the city council proceedings since, from 1970 on, are available through the heritage Bernaby website. So that's quite an amazing feat, and people like Mr. Rowey can go back and find out the things like exactly what year, who became a city, et cetera, et cetera, right? So that's, that's a big accomplishment this year. Also, we now actually have, in addition to that, a complete index of all council minutes and reports dating back to 1934, and those can be searched online, and then you have to come and actually see the documents, they're not available online yet, but so, so again, back to 1934, those indexes are available. In addition, over the year, we had some additional staffing support, we were able to provide the archives, and so they caught up on a lot of backlog of various city departments' work, and so for example, over 4,000 city-generated photographs were processed through the system, and so again, all of those things are now available, they've all been described and characterized in, you know, according to the property rules, and those are also available. And the staff comment that this actually assists the staff when they're having to do research over projects, because they don't have to go through physical files, as you can imagine what that would take, going back to property records and things from, from a long, long time ago. So that's tremendous. They also transferred 61 boxes of materials from the legal department, smiling over there, and now have those included as well, and described in the new automated system. So again, catching up on some backlogs, and all of those things are greatly appreciated, and makes not only access for the public in our new open, what's the word, open government, yes, so that people can see all of those documents and things online. It also actually greatly assists our staff when they're looking back over time for records, easier for them to find. So we did our usual, our usual community outreach, participating in projects in cooperation with the, with our libraries, with the RCMP for their open house, and the city's own open house, and, and also, oh, we finished and completed almost a year ago, or no, this year, that the heritage Bernaby website upgrade. So remember, we won a prize for it when we first got our heritage website up and going, and we have already had to do an upgrade of it, so it's, it's even better now, and that was completed over the years. So lots of accomplishments, and lots of good work by our archive staff, and encourage anyone to check out the website and look at the materials there, it's pretty exciting work.
Thank you, councillor, and I was impressed with the work that's been done on the Bernaby Historical Society Community Archives Collection. They sent us over 100 meters of textual records, 100 meters, they didn't count boxes, 100 meters.
That's how you measure this stuff, isn't it?
That's right, it's a football field of, of records that they brought over, and 10,000 photographs were brought in, and all of that is being put into, is being digitized and put into our records over the course of time. It is quite incredible, and I, I want to, you know, congratulate the clerk's office for overseeing this program that coordinates archives, records management, our ongoing ability to maintain our existing records, to go back and catch up with the records we've had from the past, and our IT department, who have come in and been a very valuable partner in ensuring that, that we're able to get a digital record, and that we're able to have the public access those records, to look at the records we have and the photographs that we've had, which is, again, an incredible job. It has all been work that's been overseen by our heritage commission, and I greatly appreciate that we continue to do such a good job. It's ironic, in 2001, I can remember, that we did our archives at the McGill Library, and we've now outgrown them in 15 years, we're now, have outgrown the archives that we have existing, and are looking for ways to, in the future, be able to expand. But I believe very much it's important to our citizens that they have access in the long term to all of the records of the city, and it's particularly relevant to people who want to do research for academic purposes. I know that many people from places like BCIT or from SFU are utilizing our records to go back and to be able to look at the way issues were dealt with 50 and 60 and 70 years ago. So again, it is a very valuable asset, and congratulations for the ongoing work of our staff in protecting Bernaby's records and heritage documents and photographs. All right, you ready for the question? All those in favor, opposed, carried. Item 4C, councillor Jordan.
Thank you again, Your Worship. The commission also dealt with correspondence from a member of parliament who had put forward a private members bill, and what they were requesting is support for that bill in order to provide additional funding for the rehabilitation of historic buildings in Canada, and it's our understanding that the bill is supposed to be debated, if not this week, perhaps next, in the House, and they were encouraging people's actions ourselves to support, to support this resolution, and indicate our support through the bill, and so the commission recommends that. His Worship, Mayor Corrigan, on behalf of council, write a letter to Bernaby MPs in support of the proposed heritage tax credit, and that a copy of the letter be sent to Heritage B.C. for information, and I so move.
Been moved and seconded, is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, opposed and carried.
Just one small piece of irony, Your Worship, it's interesting that this MP was, was the government, not that long ago, he was on the government side, and didn't manage to accomplish this there, but now as a member of the opposition, he's bringing it forward, so good luck with that, but we support him all the way.
There we go. Hopefully he'll have more luck with the new government than he had with his own.
Exactly.
All right, moving on to the city manager's report, item 5.1, this is the license agreement renewal for the Bernaby and Region Allotment Gardens Association.
With the recommendation.
Been moved and seconded, councillor Valco.
Quickly, I wouldn't, wouldn't normally speak on this, but just a little context on what this is. This has been as part of the city, this agreement since 1974, and it's 14 and a half acres of city property down there that is allocated out to citizens, residents mainly of Bernaby, to go down there and practice their gardening skills, and oddly enough, I wasn't even aware of this, that this was an arrangement between the city and the province in 1974, and the province, the provinces is their want, and many projects that cities get involved with them, walked away in 1981 and left the city holding the bag on all of it. So it's interesting, but it's a great program, and as the report says, last year, 2,200 pounds of food grown at the allotment gardens went to the food bank. So it's an interesting program, and with the urbanization, not only in Bernaby but region-wide, these, these types of facilities are, and I know are more and more not only required, but I know there's a lot of people now that sold their homes and moved into condos and everything else that wish they had an opportunity to continue gardening as they did when they owned a single detached. So it's an interesting report, and thank you.
Thanks for making that point, because those of us who've been around politics for a while know that oftentimes you'll get into an agreement with the province or the feds, they'll decide after a few years that it no longer interests them, they get out, and you're left funding it. And so if we're ever hesitant about getting into a project with them, people should know why, it's because we've learned over the long haul that oftentimes they'll leave us later on, once people are completely dependent upon the program, we're left funding, so it can be very difficult when you enter. All right, you ready for the question? All those in favor, opposed, carried. Item 5.2, this is, this is special outdoor events for 2017, and we have a whole series of outdoor events coming up over the course of the next year at Deer Lake and Swan Guard. I know there were some students in talking about favorite events, I can tell you that my own favorite events are, certainly I love to go to the symphony in the park, and the Bernaby Blues and Roots Festival is really, you know, every year, it's a big surprise as to who they're bringing in, what kind of talent we're going to see, and for those of us who love blues and roots music, it's always a great event. You know, we certainly have Live Nation coming in with concerts over the course of the summer, but this year, I think my, my favorite event is going to be our Canada Day celebration, our 125 anniversary celebration that we're going to have at Swan Guard. We put aside a little extra to be able to do something special this year, I'm really looking forward to it, and I can tell you that the community has really adopted that event. We've got the Edmunds Canada Day Celebration, we've got the Bernaby Village Museum Celebration, and then we've got Swan Guard at night, and people have really And people have really cottoned on to the Swan Gard Celebration and love it. So this year, there'll be something special. I can hardly wait to find out who we're going to have here to perform for us. And there'll probably be even more fireworks than there has been in the past years. So I'm looking forward to that. All right, you ready for the question? All those in favor, opposed and carried. Item 5.3. This is the building permit tabulation report for the City of Burnaby, councillor McTinnell.
One short comment. I, when I was looking at it on the year-to-date for permits, it's 79 million plus with 147 permits. Last year, the year-to-date, we had 150 permits, but it was only $30 million. So you can see the value of what these things are doing. And I mean, that's two and a half times what we had last January. So I don't see any slowdown coming either for a long time.
You never can tell when projects come in and, and how, but it's a good start to the year. Lots of work for our planning department is that, I imagine you were just sitting around waiting for that work to come in, Mr. Velchuk. Ready for the question? All those in favor, opposed and carried. Item 5.4. Great, and 5.4 is that council authorized the increase of the city manager's authority to approve requests by officers, employees of the city to attend courses, conferences and meetings, or for travel in respect to city business where the estimated cost does not exceed $10,000, and that the city solicitor be directed to prepare a bylaw amendment to the Burnaby Routine Transaction Authority bylaw. Questions called. All those in favor, opposed and carried. And this is parkland acquisition levy and expenditures. This provides for funding for future parkland acquisitions. Questions called. All those in favor, opposed, carried. Item 5.6. And this is to request council to bring down a bylaw to appropriate $1,277,010, inclusive of GST, from capital reserves to finance eight projects in the Parks Recreation and Cultural Services Department. Questions been called. All those in favor, opposed, carried. Item 5.7. This is phase three of our LED streetlight conversion, and this is to approve an increase in the contract for the phase three. Questions called. All those in favor, opposed and carried. Item 5.8. And this is to obtain council approval to award a contract for the supply and delivery of two tandem dump trucks from Peterbilt Pacific Incorporated. This is $574,315.84. Ready for the question? All those in favor, opposed, carried. A motion that the committee rise and report. All those in favor, opposed, carried. A motion to adopt the report of the committee. All those in favor, opposed and carried. Bylaws, councillor Valco, please.
Your Worship. Been a while. See, let's see if we can still do it. Here we go. For first, second and third reading, I move that bylaw numbered 13723 be now introduced and read three times.
Moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, opposed and carried.
For reconsideration and final adoption, I would move that bylaws numbered 13712, 13713, 13714, 13715, 13716, 13717, 13718, 13719, be now reconsidered, finally adopted, signed by the mayor and clerk, and the corporate seal affixed there too.
Okay. Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, opposed and carried. Is there any new business? Councillor Jordan.
It's not really new business, but I, I think if councillor Calendino was here, he may bring this up. He, he inquired last week of staff about the contract for the garbage containers, outsold garbage containers. And I just, and in case somebody was, you know, watching and wonders what happened, we did get a memo from staff about that, the bids on that proposal. And there were three companies that bid. Only one of them was a Canadian company. And our staff tell us that they did not, the Canadian company did not meet the product specifications and things that we needed for, for the equipment that we have. So that was, the decision was to award to, to a total company in the, in the U.S. of A, unfortunately. So that was the explanation.
Fortunately for them.
Fortunately for them, $1 million or so, yes. But for the Canadian companies, unfortunate.
Well, thank you very, very much for picking up that loose end because I know people who watch at home are interested in finding out what happened as a result of an inquiry. So even though councillor Calendino isn't here, I'm sure he's watching at home. All right, councillor Valco.
I'm just hoping you would just indulge me a few minutes. I'll try to stay within our procedural bylaw. But I haven't had an opportunity to do this, and I just wanted to let, or thank my council colleagues and members of staff, in particular our clerks and managers' office, that in the periods of time that I wasn't able to attend council meetings. And to members of the public who, through emails, phone calls at home, and even approaches out in public when I was out shopping or wherever, coming up and wishing me well and encouraging me in my treatments, I just want everyone to know that I'm finished my treatments as of Friday of last week. I still have another little hill to climb, but I'm ready to do that. But so far, so good. And again, I would really like to thank the clerk's department in particular for keeping me apprised of what was going on, the manager's department, who whenever I had a query about anything, were always quick to come back to me. So again, I'm still here, and I'm hoping to be here for a while longer. So thank you, Your Worship. And, and again, to my colleagues and staff, thanks very much for, for your indulgence over the last couple of months.
Nice haircut, too.
I was going to say, it's not, it's not a way I would recommend cutting your hair. The, the laser knives, they're not that precise. But anyways, yeah, you're right. It's a hell of a way to get a haircut.
You're looking good, councillor Valco. And I'm glad, I'm glad that the treatments, at least part of your treatments are over and everyone is with you as you go through this battle.
Thank you, Your Worship.
All right. And seeing no further speakers, a motion to adjourn is in order. Been moved and seconded. All those in favor, opposed, carried. Thank you very much to council and staff, and thank you to everyone who was here with us tonight.